Good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2025 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Andrew Eric, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market-rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications, unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with those projects. Staff in our city's planning division are responsible for processing development applications, as well as for both implementing and amending the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies in order to further the goals of the city. Staff is also responsible for the agenda of regular planning commission meetings and for prioritizing what and when agenda items or development applications come before the planning commission. Planning commissioners do not have any ability to place items on the agenda for these meetings. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. With that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Farrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schindler.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Present.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
Present.
I am Chair Eric, and I am also present. We have seven commissioners in chambers, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Ms. Sandmeyer, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, good evening Chair Eric and Commissioners. There are two items on tomorrow's city council agenda that may be of interest to commissioners. The first is an Election Code Section 9212 report regarding the proposed initiative measure entitled Downtown Parking Plaza as an Ordinance Initiative. And the second is the determination of action pursuant to Election Code regarding the proposed initiative. That concludes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Do commissioners have any questions about those announcements or reports or announcements of their own? Okay, just a quick announcement on my end, a reminder to commissioners that we are going to vote on consent calendar tonight via a raise of hands instead of a roll-call vote. Okay, then let's move to item D, the public comment portion of our agenda. Under "public comment," the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under "public comment" for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name, district, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under "public comment" other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. To learn how to participate in public comment, I'm going to turn to our clerk this evening, Ms. Roy, to explain how you can participate, and then to begin our public comment period.
Thank you Chair Eric, Commissioners and members of public. Monica Roy, planning technician. At this time, we are opening public comment period for items not listed on this agenda. If you are in the council chamber and you'd like to speak, please fill out a comment card and hand it over to me. For those who are attending virtually via Zoom, please click the raised hand button. And if you are calling by phone, please press star nine on your keypad, and you will be able to speak. At this moment, I don't have any hand raised or any comment cards. We can wait a few more moments if you'd like.
Okay, we'll continue on. If anyone raises their hand at the next minute or so, just please interrupt me and let me know. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Tonight, there is one item on the consent calendar. Ms. Roy, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this agenda item and open the public comment period for the consent calendar?
Thank you Chair Eric again. We are opening public comment period for this item now. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you'd like to speak, please fill out a comment card and hand it over to me. And for those who are attending virtually via Zoom, please click the raised hand button. And if you are calling by phone, please press star nine on your keypad, and you will be able to speak. At this moment, I don't have any comment cards, but give me a few moments. Yeah, so I don't have any comment cards for this item right now. Thank you Chair Eric.
Okay, thank you Ms. Roy. I'm going to close public comment on the consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull the item from the consent calendar? Okay, in that case, we're going to do this... Oh, sorry, we need a motion first. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar? See, Commissioner Doe makes a motion. Commissioner Farrick seconds that motion. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We now will move on to item F1, the first public hearing item. This agenda item is regarding a use permit at 253 Marmona Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to determine the floor area limit for a parcel that is less than 5,000 square feet and to construct an addition and conduct interior modifications to an existing non-conforming, single-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Ball, I believe you are the staff lead on this project, and I believe we have the designer and the property owner here. But, Mr. Ball, I'll go first to you. Does staff wish to make any additions to the staff report?
Thank you Chair Eric and members of the planning commission. I don't have any updates to the staff report at this time, but I am available for questions, as well as the applicants and homeowners who are in attendance.
Okay, before we move to public comment on this item, do any commissioners have clarifying questions for staff or the applicant?
I just wanted to note, for informational purposes, that I live within a 500-foot radius of the residence in question, but I'm a renter and don't feel like this would impact me materially in any way, and do not plan on recusing myself for this item.
I live within 1,000 feet of this residence, and for similar reasons, being a renter, I will not be recusing myself from this item either. Ms. Roy, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period for item F1?
Thank you Chair. We are opening public comment period for this item F1. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you'd like to speak, please fill out a comment card and hand it over to me. And for those who are attending virtually via Zoom, please click the raised hand button. And if you're calling by phone, please press star nine on your keypad. At this moment, I have two comment cards with me. If you'd like, I can introduce the first speakers.
Please go ahead.
So our first speaker is Michael Whitelock. You can move forward to the podium and allow me some time to set up your timer, You, Mr. Dutton.
My name is Michael Whitelock. I live at 285 Marmona Drive, which is directly across the court from Patricia and Marco's home. I had a similar room and a bedroom and bathroom added about 30 years ago before my partner and I moved in. It doesn't change the profile of the house, and it is, I think, justified in this case. I also have a message here from Sandy Peshad, who lives at 313 Marmona Drive, which is right next door to mine. Sandy grew up in the Willows and is also the current president of the Menlo Park Historical Association. And I think her comments reflect the neighbors' comments as well. I am writing respectfully to request your support in allowing Marco and Patricia to move forward with their proposed addition to their home in Menlo Park. Marco and Patricia have been thoughtful, responsible stewards of their property and deeply engaged members in the community. Their home no longer meets the needs of their family, and the modest addition they are proposing would allow them to remain in their neighborhood while ensuring that their home remains safe, functional, and suitable for long-term use. They have worked diligently to design an addition that is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, adheres to city guidelines, and minimizes any potential impact on surrounding properties. Their plans reflect genuine care for preserving the charm and scale of their street while making reasonable updates that will improve the quality of their life. By approving their request, the planning commission would be helping a longstanding Menlo Park family continue to grow in place, something that strengthens the stability fabric and continuity of our community. Thank you for your time and service and your thoughtful consideration of this request. Respectfully, Sandy Peshad, 313 Marmona Drive. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comment.
I can move forward with the second speaker. So our second speaker is Daniel Fowler. Please move forward to the podium, and you will be able to speak now.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Daniel Fowler. I've lived in the Willows for 45 years. I don't have much more to add to what Mr. Whitelock said or what Sandra Peshad said. I support this project. I would like to point out, though, that Mr. Whitelock's house is virtually identical to Patricia's and Marco's home, and his addition is almost identical to what they are proposing to do. So I think we should go ahead and allow this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Roy, are there any other public comments?
No, I don't have any other public comments at this moment here. Thank you.
Okay, given that, I will move us into commission discussion and ultimately, a motion regarding the use permit. I'll just say upfront that this seems fairly straightforward to me, and especially, given the public comments. I would be comfortable with a motion, but I am open to any comments from my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks. Was that a motion, or just you're open to a motion?
No, 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 I did not make a motion. I am open to one.
Great. Well, I'm happy to make said motion, but I also have a question for staff.
Please go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. I would love to understand... This one is so... It reminds me of how... I don't know that we'd be seeing this if this were chosen to be constructed to qualify as an attached ADU. Is that right? Would we be reviewing this at all?
If it were an attached ADU, and then it was all... And if it's also at the 800 square feet or less, then we... Yes, you're correct, we wouldn't be reviewing it.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm happy to make the motion to approve this per the staff report.
Okay, seeing no other comments from commissioners, I will go ahead and call the vote. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That motion passes. Seven votes in favor, none against. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item F2, which is regarding a use permit and variance at 1917 Euclid Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing, single-family, single-story residence and build a new, single-family, two-story residence on a substandard lot with regard to lot width and area in the R3 Apartment Zoning District. The proposal includes a request for a variance for the new residents to encroach into the required 20-foot separation between the main buildings located on adjacent lots. The proposal also includes the conversion of an existing accessory building to a detached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. Mr. Toy, I believe, is the staff lead for this project. Mr. Toy, are there any updates to the staff report?
Thank you Chair Eric. There are no updates to the staff report, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, and I believe we have an oral presentation from the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, the applicants are virtual, and they're going to make a short oral presentation.
Okay, let's... Please go ahead with that.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Brian, thank you for all your help with our application. So the reason for our use permit application is just due to...
I'm sorry, sir, can you just quickly state your name, please?
Certainly. My name is Will Cullford. I'm the project manager for this proposal.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Thank you. The reason for our use permit application, as you mentioned, is just due to a hardship created by the zoning this lot falls into, as per associate planner with Menlo Park, Fatin Khan. Our proposal for a new two-story home on a substandard lot requires a use permit. The lot width is 58 feet, whereas 70 feet would be the minimum required lot width. Additionally, the lot size of 6,959 square feet is also just shy of substandard, as 7,000 is the minimum size required. So that's... We're shy of just a few feet, and that's the whole reason why you're even considering our application here this evening. Despite the undersized lot, however, our proposal still manages to be well within the lot coverage height and all setback requirements, save for the one variance that we are applying for, which is a condition created by the neighboring main structure having been constructed prior to the current minimum setback requirements from the property line. The current code, I believe, requires neighboring main structures to be a minimum distance of 20 feet from each other. Our proposal is in compliance with the required minimum 10-foot setback from all neighboring property lines, but the neighboring main structure sits approximately five or six feet away from their own property line, leaving a variance request of approximately four to five feet. We, of course, cannot ask our neighbor to move their home, so instead are seeking this variance request. We would move our proposal further away from this property line, but would then be encroaching upon the trees we have been asked by the city arborists to protect and preserve. As we already are planting several additional mature trees to meet requirements, we are hoping we can please be granted this variance to ensure no further trees are required to be removed. We also, of course, feel that due to being compliant with our 10-feet distance to our side property line, it is unfair for us to make up the remainder of the needed distance the neighboring main structure is not in compliance with. We're happy to answer questions or address concerns, but are pleased seeking approval of the use permit today, along with the variance, so that our project may proceed to the next phase and submit for a bill permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude the applicant presentation, or are there other folks who wish to speak?
That concludes my portion. I am joined by the owner and other project manager here. I'm not sure if they have any comments or additions.
Okay, it seems like not so. We'll move forward. Before we move to public comments, are there any clarifying questions from my fellow commissioners for either staff or the applicants? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you Chair. I have two minor questions, just about, so I can correctly interpret a couple of the floor plans. My question to the applicant is, is there a partial kitchen or sink in the room labeled Bedroom 1 on the second floor?
I'm not sure about the labeling of Bedroom 1. There is a sink on the second floor.
In the large bedroom at the back of the house. Okay. My second question is just, is there a difference between the two bedrooms that are labeled "master bedrooms"? There's one on the first floor and one on the second floor.
There's no functional difference. How we construct our properties is really just a single-floor layout, and in a two-story situation, we stack those single floors on top of each other, so there may be some, you know, overlap of wording when it comes to the bedrooms.
Okay, you have exactly anticipated my final question, which is just looking to understand the nature of modular... The modular nature of the construction. It's something we have not seen many of here, and it's to the benefit, I think, of the planning commission just to have at least a high-level understanding of how it works and what the approach is. So I took your answer to be that there is a sort of a single unit, if you would, like a block, and we're stacking... You're stacking two of them on top of each other in this... In the case of this particular residence. Is that correct?
There's... Essentially, yes. It's not a single-block unit. It's multiple that get put together on-site. So they're constructed away from site, shipped, and then put together on-site. The advantage being, there's no destructive long construction season in this build. The home comes built, and it's about a five-day, five-to-10-day install period, simply where the modulators are put onto-site, welded in place, and then some finishing details are put together.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional context. That's the end of my clarifying questions.
Thank you Commissioner Schindler. Vice Chair Silverstein.
This is a clarifying question for staff. Question about the variance. It's my understanding that this specific distance between main buildings on adjacent lots is specific to the R3 zoning district and is not present in R1. So if I'm misunderstanding, then Claire, then correct me, but my question is, do you have any understanding of the intention behind that? Given that there already is the 10-foot setback on each lot, then by definition, the only way this comes into play is if your neighbor, in this case, violates it, and then theoretically, you're punished for that by needing to request a variance. And so, obviously, we weren't here when this was originally put in place, but is there a rationale behind that required distance beyond what we already have in terms of the setbacks in the first place?
So yes, you're correct that the R3 district is the only district that has that requirement. I don't know the intention behind it. I don't know if Karina knows off the top of her head, but we'd be happy to follow up with the commissioners to see if we can find out any more information.
Is my understanding, at least, correct through the chair, that the only way this comes up is if you're in compliance with the setback, then your neighbor could possibly not be in compliance, therefore forcing you to ask for that variance?
Yes, at least one of the structures would be non-conforming and would be closer to the setback.
Thank you. Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. I had a question for staff regarding... On page A9 in Appendix A and A10, there's screenshots of these worksheets, checklists, that I haven't seen in other staff reports, like impervious area calculation, stormwater requirements, et cetera. I was just curious if that was something that is special for this project, or if there's something... Like, there's a particular reason why it's included for this application.
Thank you Commissioner Sillen. The stormwater... Those are the stormwater impervious area worksheets, and they are submitted for quite a number of projects. They're reviewed by Public Works. The applicant included them in the plan set in this case, but a lot of times, they're submitted as a separate document, and if they're submitted as a separate document, we wouldn't include them in the agenda and staff report.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, seeing no other clarifying questions, I'm going to move us to public comment. Ms. Roy, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment and start the comment period for item F2?
Thank you Chair. We are opening public comment period for item F2. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you'd like to speak, please fill out a comment card and hand it over to me. For those who are attending virtually via Zoom, please click on the raised hand button, and if you are calling by phone, please press star nine on your keypad, and you will be able to speak. At this moment, I don't have any comment cards with me or any hands raised. If you'd like, we can wait a few moments.
I think folks have had long enough given the questions, so I will go ahead and close the comment period for item F2 and move us into commission discussion and ultimately, a motion regarding the use permit and variance. Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. I had another question for staff. On page three of the staff report, there's a density section that points out that this is an R3 lot, but because it's substandard, that would make it difficult, or, I quote, "it would make the development of two units more challenging than on a standard lot." So I was just hoping if staff could clarify what they mean by challenging or more challenging.
So it could be just because of the narrow nature and the narrow width of the lot, it could be more challenging to actually construct multiple primary dwelling units on this lot due to its size. So the purpose of that section was just to, like, basically highlight that this ADU would functionally be a second dwelling unit. So even though it's a single-family home, the city would have two dwelling units, rather than just one on this site in the R3 district.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Yeah, I think my question... Or my comment just on that very specific part of the report. And yeah, when I was looking at this project, the first thing that caught my eye is that it is an R3 zone, and we don't have a lot of... You know, lots that are in an R3 zone. I do understand the applicant's point of view that, you know, they have a right to keep this as a single-family home, as they said in their project letter that's in the packet, and... project letter that's in the packet, and I don't want to contest that. I do kind of take issue with the fact that this is, you know, challenging. Just as a quick search, I found, for example, in San Mateo for multifamily lots, they have, they allow four units on 8,000 square feet, whereas this project is just about 7,000. A more kind of higher example would be, I found an article called "The Seattle Special," where in Seattle, a long time ago, they changed their development standards such that, you know, there's projects with like 20, 30, 40 units on 5,000-square-foot lots. For example, the first one mentioned in that article is on a 50-by-100-foot lot, 5,000 square feet, 21 units, built in 2022. So I don't think it's, I don't think we should see this as like an impossible thing to put more units on this lot. I do respect, again, the applicant's decision not to do that. I think that's, our zoning clearly allows that, and I don't think I'm in a position today to go against that, but I do think that since Menlo Park is in need of more housing, we should consider perhaps adding some sort of density minimum for the multifamily lots that we do have in the future, and that would be obviously a council decision. So that's my only comment on this, and other than that, I don't see any issues with the project. I think it's fair to grant the variance since, as the applicant said, it's caused by the non-conforming situation on the other lot. I agree with Vice Chair Silverstein that it's a weird rule to have, since it can only be triggered by a non-conforming situation, but I'm comfortable granting the variance, and I support the project overall. Thank you.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
To quickly follow up on that point, and as a follow-up on my clarifying question, yeah, it seems like the only opportunity for this variance to come into play is when something is non-conforming, in which case it has to come before the Planning Commission in the first place, and so now we just need to adjudicate two things. And again, in this example, we would only see it because the adjacent neighbor is not in compliance, and that's nothing that I feel comfortable penalizing the applicant for. And my particular comment is, I understand that the Planning Commission will be reviewing and revisiting our zoning code with respect to substandard lots. And my ask to staff is to make a note of this rule in R3 also as a item that is worth reviewing and revisiting on whether or not it should still exist, and we should recommend that we remove it entirely.
I'll also just quickly second both of those things. I was going to request the same of staff, that we take a look at this part of the zoning code and streamline it a bit, since it does seem redundant. And I was also going to say that I disagree with the characterization in the staff report, that it is challenging to build multifamily housing on this lot, and I would ask staff to refrain from making those sorts of statements, especially given the priority that the city has to construct more housing, given our Rena goals. But I am in favor of approving this and open to a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance requested, the 20 feet, and approve the project, the use permit. And I'm happy to second the motion for the use permit and the variance as well.
Okay, seeing no further comments, I will call the vote on item F2. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is seven votes in favor with none opposed. Item F2 passes. Okay, we will now move on to item F3. This agenda item is regarding a use permit at 1015 Henderson Avenue. During this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing single-story residence to construct a two-story, sorry, a new two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The proposal also includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Determine this action is categorically exempt under Sequel Guidelines Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. Mr. Pruder, welcome. I believe you're the staff lead for this project. Does staff have any updates to the staff report?
Good evening, Chair Eric. Planning Commissioners, members of the public, this is Matt Pruder, Associate Planner. We do have a few brief updates at this time regarding the project at 1015 Henderson Avenue, item F3. We received three public comment letters over the course of the holiday weekend following the sorry, the publication of the staff report and agenda packet. And two of the comments involved concerns from neighboring residents, and one of the comment, one of the comments was expressing support for the project. And I don't have any other specific updates at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I will state that we do have the applicant team in attendance this evening. They will be providing a presentation, which I will be sharing my screen for, and that this will be led by the architect for the project, Ali Fami. And if you have no questions for me, we can begin that process, but happy to wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. Let's go ahead with that presentation.
And just if I may, the chair, I'm putting it up on my screen now, so just be one moment. Ali, if you have a moment of patience, I'll just have it up. Thank you. Okay, if I may, the chair, you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is Ali Fami, the Architecture Project Manager on this project from Studio Squared Architecture. We also have here attendance Eugene Sakai, the CEO of the firm, and Lily Omron, and Asifay, the owners of this property. And just before I start, I would like to pass a scale model that I hope to help clarify the messing. If we can go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so this is a existing, this is existing conditions of the current, of the subject property, which is a single story between two single stories on the sides. Next, please. These are the existing photos of the current house, which is in very bad shape, and currently no one is inhabiting the house. Next slide, please. So this is an existing condition. A little bit of background. There was a shared driveway between this property and the neighboring property, which was total 15 feet in width, seven and a half feet in each property, which was used as a shared driveway. The, after the discussion with the owner and the neighbor, the neighbor agreed to revise the easement agreement, so that has been reduced to 10 feet total. So that only occupies two and a half feet of the subject property, and we reclaimed five feet back. Next slide, please. So as you can see here, the red area, that's like the current easement, and the yellow area, that's like the reclaimed easement, which is five feet in width, and this has been recorded with the county already and approved. Next slide, please. So this is a layout of the current, the first floor plan, which we're providing two car garage in addition to potential also two car spots on the driveway, so that's total four off-street parking spots. And there is a small, like, the highlights of this project are a small courtyard and a and the separate entrance adjacent to the courtyard to the ADU on the second floor. And the stairs, as you can see obviously on the side. Next slide, please. So this is the second floor, and it's a split level around three, around two and a half, two and a half feet difference between the ADU on the left side and the primary house on the right side, which consists of the three bedrooms facing the front yard. Next slide, please. As you can see here, this is the current or the proposed design in between the existing two houses on the sides. We were, we tried to minimize bulk and the mass of the house by setting the, by pushing the second floor from the front further away from the first floor, and also providing more setbacks on the, on the sides for the second floor. And we tapered the design so that the highest portion of the house in the middle and away from the adjacent properties. Next slide, please. So this is just views from different angles. As you can see in the bottom left side, on the right portion of that, how the second floor is set away from the first first floor. Next slide, please. This is different views mainly from the other side and the rear. Next slide, please. These are the wall plate heights and the floor finishes and the maximum heights. First floor is nine feet, second floor is also nine feet, was ADU is 10 feet. And the great room is at 12 feet in the front of the first floor. Next slide, please. This is a material, proposed material palette for the house, mainly light and dark stucco finishes and some wooden and stone accents on the front portion of the, of the house. Next slide, please. This is additional views for the house. Next slide, please. And here, here's a more closer view of the courtyard on the, on the side. Next, please. Yeah, here's a view, more of the, of a top view and closer view of the second floor. Next, please. The, now we'll talk more about the neighborhood outreach. The owners sent the floor, like, an email and a physical mail, the details of the floor, floor plans and the project to the neighbors. Next slide, please. Here's like the forums and some of the evidence for that. Next slide, please. So those are the homes that were contacted by the, by the owner. And we haven't, I think the owner directly received some of the, we, they were all supportive of the house. The only concern was from 1011, which is the adjacent house on the left, and they mainly have four concerns. And the, one of them was privacy over the second floor windows, primarily in the ADU. But the owner agreed based on the suggestion of the neighbor to provide tall, fast-growing screening on the property line, and which we are also the landscape architect on board, so we'll also ensure that. Next, next slide, please. Yeah, this is the property line in question. Next slide, please. Other concern was the heritage tree, which is labeled at the bottom left of the floor plan, which is number 13. And the owner, the neighbor just wanted to ensure that there was an arborist certified arborist on board, and we have guilty arborist services, which the contact information is on the slide. And this is from the arborist report, which will, providing tree protection for this tree in question. Next slide, please. The other two concern were like construction noise, and the owner will follow with the general contractor, all the city ordinance regarding that, and last design materials and colors, which are, the owner agreed to consult the, an involved neighbor on the shared fence of the shared color, the materials and color choice of the shared fence with the neighbors. So this was prepared in the morning, and after that, we received the other three comments that Planner Matt mentioned. And one of them is at 1028, which is at the rear of the neighbor, so it's not directly on the rear. And there were also similar concerns to the adjacent neighbor, which is privacy concern from the windows, and we will also be willing to plant screening plants on the rear to mitigate this privacy concern. The other two lots, which mentioned that they are concerned about the amount of parking and the increased size of the house being two stories and additional unit of ADU will bring more cars, and we are providing two, two cars covered and two uncovered, so that should, we believe, mitigate this issue. And yeah, I think that's it, and we'll be happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fami. Before we move to public comment, do any commissioners have clarifying questions for staff or for the applicant team? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fami. You can go ahead and sit down. We'll call you back up if we have further questions. Ms. Roy, can you please provide instructions on public comment and open the comment period for item F3?
Thank you, Chair Eric. We are opening public comment period for this item now. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you'd like to speak, please fill out a comment card and hand it over to me. For those who are attending virtually via Zoom, please click on raised hand button, and if you are calling by phone, please press star nine on your keypad, and you will be able to speak. At this moment, I do have one comment card with me. If you like, I can introduce the speaker.
Please go ahead.
So our speaker is Russell Ombur. Please move forward to the podium, and you should be able to speak. Please wait a moment. I, I can set up your timer. Thank you.
Okay, I'm up.
Please speak now.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Russell Denver. I live at 1028 Berkeley Avenue, which I'm, I don't live directly behind the 1015 house. I live one house over, closer to the freeway. So in other words, I share a corner, my rear corner, with the 1015 Henderson House. And I think the design is interesting and innovative. I, in general, like it. There are, there's one concern that I have. It has to do with the privacy of the windows all along the back of the house that enable it to overlook my lot. And also, there's a window on the north side near the back that allows it to overlook my lot. And I've, the size of the windows, I think, is the problem that other windows I've seen in two-story houses, they start at about five feet up and then go up to whatever, you know, ceiling height. But they don't allow the people casually in the house to be looking down on their neighbors every time they're in the room. And one simple solution to this is some kind of obscuring film on the lower half of the windows, let's say up to five feet. This obscuring film is readily available. It comes in different patterns, different colors, different thermal characteristics, different ultraviolet absorption characteristics. I know, because I put some ultraviolet film on my window and got a pretty good tour of what's available on the internet. So I think this is an easy problem to solve, not expensive to solve, but it would make a major difference in, I think, all of the second-story windows that could be treated this way up to that could be treated this way up to five feet to allow just casual observation. And this privacy business is, is important. It's not, it's a tangible item. Like I said, I've been in other houses that have these high windows. I've been in the yards next to them where looking up at these higher windows and they are very useful and would solve this problem very easily. Okay, so that's, that's it. You know, I just like to have the requirement that these windows be treated or modified in such a fashion.
Thank you for your comment.
I don't have any additional comments at this moment, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to close the public comment period for item F3 and move us into commission discussion and ultimately emotion regarding the use permit.
I'll start.
Commissioner Beruzzi.
I'm wondering if we can put the plans, the schematic of the plans back up with the visual of the, so that we can see what the windows look like. Is there somebody who can do that? Thank you, Mr. Prueter.
If I may through the chair, sorry, I'll just put it right up, one moment. If I may through the chair, I believe the top right image shows kind of the rear right corner. So you can see the second story windows there. And then the bottom right image here can show you kind of a straight-on rear elevation. We have a few other renders, but I'm happy to just keep this up. Let me know if there's any desire to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. So it kind of seems like the windows are facing directly back, right? Not kind of diagonally? Am I misunderstanding that? Applicant.
I can defer to the applicant, but I believe, yes, what we are seeing here is a kind of parallel axis, if you will, of the rear elevation relative to the rear property line. Although there is a corner that has windows kind of joining closely with the framing.
Okay. One thing I'll mention, I mean, I've, I've just heard the public commenter's request and I've read the letter. I, I don't know if it's reasonable to imagine that a tree will go away and I don't, I mean, I'm looking at this and it looks like there has been some sensitivity to peripheral visibility. I could also see the residents of this development, or this, this ADU in particular, maybe wanting a little bit more privacy. And I'm curious about whether the applicant's considered the request or has any response to that. I'm also wondering, and this is not something that Menlo Park has been doing at all, but I'm also wondering if the staff have any opinion about whether or not, if we were in the future, say, to have a bird-safe design ordinance, if this upper floor large expansive glass would be considered bird-safe? Because that's another thing that we might want to start thinking about in the future. And this could be, forgive me, killing two birds with one stone to consider both a privacy treatment of the glass that would also perhaps be more bird-safe. I apologize for that.
No apology needed. I think that was a question for the applicant, if you'd like to address it.
If I may through the chair, I think before the applicant speaks, Mr. Fami, if I may, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One, this is an area in which the ADU is proposed and technically the ADU cannot be restricted on the basis of the privacy of the windows. We can offer suggestions perhaps, but it's not something that the planning commission can vote on. A lot of these ADU issues we've had are along those lines. And this has happened in the past, but I think in this particular instance, it's a little different, given it's mostly second story, rear-facing, a lot of windows in that corner. Second, I just want to quickly clarify for Commissioner Beruzzi, the other detail that this zoning district does not have any bird-friendly requirements listed within it. We have that for other zoning districts, but they're more aligned with multifamily and larger-scale commercial zoning, like the Bayfront. We recently had the update in the housing element in which several larger-scale, higher-density zoning districts received an update that required some burn-friendly design. So the R3 district, the newer CMU district and a few other commercially zoned districts were similarly like the Bayfront zoning districts, RMU, O and LS, requiring this type of treatment for the windows. But that's not the case here with the more single-family zoned districts. And similarly, the ADU ordinance and state law do not have any indications on that detail as well. We are going to be talking about the ADU ordinance upcoming planning commission meeting and that could be a potential moment to discuss those details for ADUs. And it will be something that we have to think about in relation to what state law can and cannot allow for us to require. But I just wanted to make those clarifications and with that I will yield to Mr. Fami and apologies for the interruption.
Really quickly, just before the applicant responds to that, let me just summarize what I think you just said. I think what you said was, and I knew we didn't have a bird-safe ordinance. This was more about sort of forward-thinking, you know, the goal of a bird-safe ordinance, the good faith idea that we should try to kill fewer birds. But I think what it sounds like you said was, this is not something that the planning commission could attach as a condition to the approval because the ADU is not subject to our approval. What we can do is encourage the applicant to consider it as a gesture of goodwill to neighborhood. But that's, that's pretty much the extent of what we can do with regard, regarding the upper story windows on the ADU, which is, I believe, the chief concern of Mr. Denver.
Yes, that is completely correct.
All right. So to the applicant, then I would say, is this something that you might consider?
Yeah, so I'm here representing the architect, so I won't take.
Sorry, can we make sure his microphone is on?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, yeah. So I'm here representing the architect, so I can't make at the moment decisions behalf of the owners. But one thing is that unfortunately, we only received that comment three hours ago. And the, for example, we received some of our concerns from the neighbor on the left at 1011. And based on those concerns, the owner was able to provide the, with, with the neighbor like resolution, which is like, like a screening plans on the property line. So I would defer this to the owner, but I'm sure that regardless of the ability of the planning commission to, to enforce modification on the ADU, I'm sure the owner will, will be more than happy to, to address the privacy concerns.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Ferri.
Thanks, thanks. I'd like to jump in just because it's tagging into the question that Commissioner Beruzzi just asked staff. That logic kind of doesn't track though if there's no main house that's approved. So we do have approval, you know, we could create a condition of approval for the application. And so like if there, if it didn't pass, there is no ADU, so we do have, say.
Okay, thank you for your patience, Commissioner Ferri. Yes, I, we understand the concern with the question. But because of state law and the current requirements for ADUs, the determination that you make tonight and the review that's underway will only be regarding the non-ADU portions of the building. So it isn't attached to ADU, it's attached to this building. If there is some condition or concern with the main residence, again, the areas that are not the ADU, those can be addressed. You can determine a condition for that, you can determine other requirements that need to be met or issues you see with that. But it, it could result in a change to how the project, you know, would become, you know, whatever has to be modified. But the actual ADU component cannot be modified in this, you know, sense. And there are other triggers for an ADU to require use permit when it's deviating from the requirements that state law has. And it goes beyond that, it exceeds certain requirements. But in this case, that, that's basically how the ADU is to be treated for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. So, so in other words, there's a path that an owner can build just an ADU and not a main residence?
That's not entirely the case. State law requires that an ADU of up to 800 square feet is allowed. And the applicant's job, I think, in these projects is to determine how that can be feasibly provided. And there are a lot of, you know, regulatory mechanisms by state law that allow for it to be limited to a certain area based on certain setbacks, based on certain height and, you know, other positioning requirements relative to a site. But it cannot be restricted by the planning commission decision, that the 800 square foot allotment, the allowance of that.
Right. It was more just that the design and height and privacy concerns have always seemed to have been able to be part of the review and not, totally not, you know, available for modification. The size, I agree.
I think if I may, this might be incorrect. My understanding is that we cannot attach conditions of approval to the part that is the ADU. We could, for instance, attach a condition of approval saying the front door needs to be red, but we could not attach a condition of approval saying the ADU glass needs to be obscured.
Right, I get that. I just, I think there's, there was not logic if you carry it through from the beginning part. But I also think, yes, you can build a separate standalone ADU also and not build a, a main house. So I also don't know that this ADU is possible without the main house, since there's a different existing structure. So de facto, yes, they legally could build this ADU, I suppose, but it would require destroying the current house and doesn't require us to necessarily pass the rest of the main structure.
I agree that it's confusing.
Well, no, I, it's not just confusing, it's like, it doesn't actually kind of track.
I, I agree with what you said. Vice Chair Silverstein.
I think I disagree with the conclusion. I think it tracks insofar that our decision here should, cannot be based off of the ADU. And so in theory, if we don't like the ADU, we could attach a very harsh punitive punishment to the main house that might be technically allowable as per the power that the city has given us. But if the rationale we're using to do that is because we don't like the ADU, that is not fair and that is not per state law. So whatever we adjudicate should be based off of the main house irrespective of whatever we think about the ADU. And yes, we in theory could attach it as a function of that, but if that's our decision-making process and if that's the rationale behind it, then that doesn't necessarily follow the, the actual law.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Shinlan.
Thank you. Just a follow-up thought more for the benefit, benefit of general public along these lines. I agree with the conclusion that was just reached, which is that there is no part of our decision-making here tonight that can be based on any aspect of the ADU, which I think is a synopsis of what was just agreed upon. I do want to highlight for folks who watch these meetings in consideration of potential upcoming projects that this commission does from time to time, taking into consideration what happens in second-story windows. We are, we have historically, and that's not always the case, but we have historically been considered, taken into consideration privacy from one house into another house rather than from a house into a yard. And one of the key things that we look at is distance between homes. So before this clarification that we reached as a commission was, was clear in my head, I went back and looked at the fact that there are 97 feet between structures. And so was, would, would have had the condition of the ADU not been part of our decision-making process here tonight, would have been reluctant to make any condition requirement on the windows in the back of the house anyways. That's so, that is just a follow-up thought because I know that there are people and people who look at these meetings and observe them for the purposes of their own project that may eventually become before us. Since I have the mic, I will simply say that this proposed home is within the city's guidelines and therefore I will, I will expect to support it. But it does feel appropriate at this moment to acknowledge that it is significantly larger and taller and different than most of the homes in the immediate area and that I do expect that it will stand out significantly on the block.
Commissioner Ferri.
Thank you. Mr. Prueter, would you mind putting up that slide that showed the street condition with 1011 Henderson, 1015 Henderson and 1017 Henderson with the heights? It was part of the applicant's presentation as well, in case that's easier. That's the one, thank you. So my comments irrespective of our ADU conversation have always been, since I saw this in the report, that the height is really out of scale to the street. And I looked at it and I like modern structures and I think it's the diagonal elements on the top that bother me. It feels like it's an attempt to simply max out the most possible volume that could be met in the, you know, specifications. And that's, and it doesn't add to the appeal of the structure. It reminds me of a home that was built, it's on Hedge Road, that still looks totally out of scale. It's just too big compared to even the other two-story homes on the street, all similar-sized lots to this. So, you know, the, the lot, the windows on the left side, and I know we can't comment on the rear, but the left side are also far too intrusive on the neighbors. The main house second floor right side is better. The left is really, you know, I feel like needs to be addressed. The, yeah, so I guess, you know, in, in summary, I would support the style being the same modern style, but without the diagonal elements on top, it just feels like it's there to just make it bigger. You'd still have the same house, same square footage, very nice, you know, ceiling heights and all of those things that, that are desirable without needing that extra, extra height. So more, more thoughtful fenestration on the left side and ideally everywhere would be, would make this supportable by me.
Commissioner Deau.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question about the trees. It sounds like a good number of trees are being removed from the site. It says all 10 non-heritage trees on site are proposed for removal. And in just a detail, I think the tree summary table, I'm a little confused because some of them are labeled street heritage, like one through 10, there's a mix of street heritage, heritage. And I believe the one through 10 onsite trees are all onsite, not street and non-heritage, if I'm reading the staff report correctly. But my question to, through the chair to the applicant was, in your presentation, you, I think you briefly touched upon screening that was agreed upon with 1011. I didn't see it in the, the renderings, but I think the note in the presentation said fast-growing screening and I don't know what the species are and it sounds like a landscape architect is engaged to work on what exactly is the correct species. And my, my, just my comment on the trees is just in that selection and I would just hope that the purpose of the proposed planting in trees is not only screening, which I know it sounds like would be appreciated by the neighbors, but also just restoring and maintaining the, the healthfulness, the biodiversity that the trees of Menlo Park provide. So just kind of keeping that in mind in the tree selection, the, the screening, plus also with this many trees being removed from the site, maintaining kind of that, you know, what so many people love about Menlo Park. And a follow-up to Commissioner Ferri's comment on the height, it also struck me in that street elevation when I also saw it in the plan set. Is there a reason why it appears, is the ADU higher than the rest, the second story of the main house? Yeah, yes, actually, yes, that would be great, through the chair, if you could clarify that.
Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the reason it's higher.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the reason it's higher, two reasons. The second-floor main house is, the plate height is nine feet, the ADU is 10 feet. And also, the great room where the ADU sits on top is 12 feet tall, like below. So that's why it raised that portion of the house higher.
Okay, God, thank you. I understand. I was about to ask if that additional height wasn't necessary to maybe remove some of that height, but yes, you're right. I recall in the presentation, you mentioning there's a tall space, and that is what's causing that split level condition. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I'd like to apologize. There's an error in the table for the trees, and that is Table 1 in the staff report, as you rightly noted, Commissioner Doe. The text above that table is correct. There are only two heritage-sized trees. There are some street trees that were recognized, two street trees. And two, they're not heritage-sized, but they are recognized as protected trees because they are street trees. And there are two heritage trees that are not onsite. All the other trees are non-heritage-sized and onsite. Thank you all.
Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. I wanted to revisit the height one more time. Could we see that slide with the dotted lines showing the first-level height and all of that? Thank you. I suppose this is maybe a question for staff. I'm wondering, through the chair, I'm wondering why the proposed building height, the purple dashed line, is clearly below what seems to be the actual, like, physical height of the building? Are those things above the purple line somehow not contributing to the building height or?
Yes, if I may, through the chair, definitely Mr. Fami could clarify the spaces a little more, but the areas beneath the purple, sorry, the purple line are the main residence floor height details. And then, kind of in a three-dimensional sense, there is a white and darker gray mass that's taller, that's beneath that green line. And those are mostly parapet areas. There is a portion that we have counted as attic within the section drawings for this project. And those are attic areas that are within the height requirement to be exempted from the floor area calculation. However, they're not accessible attic space. But because of our definition, we have required the applicant to count and quantify, dimension, I should say, the height of those areas. They're not accessible. They're just wall thickness features, basically. And so there's no real internal floor height that's achieved, but it is building height. It is mass that does occur here. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the purple line is the top of that attic space essentially, and everything else above that is the parapet space that doesn't count?
Not quite. I apologize. But the purple line is not where attic areas are. There's no actual attic in the building, to be honest. The second floor has no attic above it. It has differing ceiling heights. And then in some areas, the, again, kind of to the rear of that where the ADU is, there is a similar roof line that has a, again, the sloping, taller, white and gray masses. Those are just parapets that are above that purple line, basically. And so that is really more where the roof line is, which is very close in thickness in the section drawings to the ceiling height. So it is more, I believe, of a decorative kind of feature, and it is not actual attic or floor height space. It is counted as an attic. We need them to, you know, document that, and we count that height, but it is not actually an occupiable area of the building.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess, follow-up question is, it was my understanding that when we talk about building heights, like when we've had homes with, let's say, a pitched roof, like the very top of that pitched roof is where we calculate the building height. But based on this drawing, it seems like there are things that could be above the height of the building that are still, like, physical elements of the building that don't count. Is that?
That's not exactly the case. Mr. Fami, you're welcome to speak after me if the planning commission would prefer that. But the main point here is that the maximum height is that green line, and the parapet features are allowed. It is not something that you cannot have on these residential buildings. Any residents can have this. I think it is just, you know, making sure that the height requirement is met. And the building height, again, is measured from average natural grade to the top of the building, whatever roof feature that is, whether it's a thicker, you know, if it's kind of a steel, you know, farmhouse, modern farmhouse format, the thickness of that versus the thickness of comp shingle, or perhaps some extra parapet that is determined to be preferred here in this case. So I think there are some variations on what that sizing and thickness can be, as long as that is all meeting the requirement of the maximum height. In this case, it is.
Good. Please.
I want to jump in to clarify quickly. I think the wording to the lines are maybe a little bit confusing, but should have clarified further. But basically, yeah, you're correct, the green line is the maximum height, and the building overall is, yeah, is close to that. But basically, the portion which is in the back, that's like part of the ADU. So that, the purple line, which was like just indicating the maximum height for the main house, but the overall structure is close to the green line, which is the maximum level building height.
Okay, thank you. That's clear. Yeah, so just to comment on that, I guess, since this house meets our regulations on height, according to this drawing, I do agree with the other commissioners that does stand out on that block. But we recently had another project that I think was in closer to, like, the West Menlo area. A similar situation where a lot of the houses on the block were shorter and, you know, the neighbors felt like a two-story house on that street was out of character. But this house is within the, all of our, you know, setback requirements, height, floor area, et cetera. So I think to deny this project or to request that it be smaller in some way, we would need to have a really good reason for that. I know it's a substandard lot. I don't think, to me at least, that means the threshold of needing this to be shorter. Regarding, I did want to revisit something else. I was hoping we could take a look at the first floor, floor plan. And I was hoping that the, through the chair, I would like to ask the applicant to describe the entrance to the second-story ADU and how that works.
Of course. So basically, the courtyard at the bottom, which is left side of the property, that space on the right was a spiral stair that's separated from the main house on the first floor. And that would function as a small office and also the vertical, that would be the entrance and lead to the vertical circulation to the ADU on the second story.
Thank you. And is that an indoor, that's an indoor space, right? So you go through some sort of door to get to that spiral staircase?
Yeah, it's counted, yeah.
Got it. And then, could we see the second floor, please? So it looks like you go up that spiral staircase, and then, I guess technically, the entrance to the ADU is on the first floor. That's where you enter the sort of ADU space, so to speak.
Yes.
And then, if you go through that dual-lockable door, you're essentially at the main house. And then there's another staircase to take you back down to the first floor of the main house. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess, looking at this second-floor floor plan, my comment is just that, to me, this ADU appears to be functioning as what is typically called a master bedroom or main bedroom of the house. Staff can stop me if I'm exceeding any sort of, like, legal limit here, but I, of course, don't see that as grounds to disapprove the project. I just think that, to me, this, it's clever, and I applaud the smart way of, like, structuring this house. And I've spoken to developers who have told me, you know, before of doing stuff like this to, like, sort of use an ADU essentially to add square footage to the house, which is, you know, you're still only like 100 feet over the maximum lot coverage. So I guess, yeah, maybe if you don't mind, back to the applicant. Would you be able to comment, is this ADU meant to be sort of an extension of the main house as a primary bedroom with a large closet? Or is it imagined as like a separate living space?
Yeah, I would defer the use, the exact use, to the owner, but I would just a little like to comment on the why we structured this way. Since the lot is substandard lot. And actually, like, we didn't gain any additional coverage by that ADU since it's overlapping the main house. So the amount of space left on the rear yard, if we would do detached ADU, that will eat up like the whole lot. So basically, that was, seemed like the best solution to preserve the rear yard and the, and the amount of imperious areas on the side.
Thanks. If I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that the owner wanted to have an ADU, and the option was detached, which would take up the backyard, or attached, and you went with the?
Yeah, I mean, we studied multiple options, and that seemed to be the, like, the most reasonable option, given the constraints of the site. And there, like, there's easement on the right side of the shared driveway. There's also an power easement on the back, in addition to the heritage tree on the neighbor's side, which is very close to the priority line, which would also reduce the setback further, and also that requires separation between the structures. So that's why this seemed like the most, like, the best solution, given the site constraints.
Got it. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think just my comment is that it's, it's a little bit confusing to me, but I'm not here to, obviously, we can't, you know, add any conditions to the ADU or disapprove or anything like that, so I'm not here to do that. I'm just here to say that, to me, it seems to be serving as an extension of the main house, which doesn't totally, you know, jive with the intended ADU policies of the state. However, technically, it could be treated as a separate unit. It's got that separate entrance. It's got the dual-lockable door on the second story. Perhaps someday it will be. But other than that, I'm happy to support the project.
Commissioner Farrak.
I just want to thank Commissioner Sellen for bringing that to light, because now I'm even looking at the number of bedrooms and labeling is, you know, in the ground floor, it's labeled BR2. And then second floor, there's BR3, 4, and 5. There's no primary, number 1, and that's because it's the ADU. So it does feel like it's a very disingenuous attempt to leverage ADU laws not in comportment with the intention of the law or the addition of a housing unit.
Vice Chair Silverstein. On the planning commission, we talk a lot about density and housing units, and we're talking about the value of having an actual separate ADU. And I am one of those voices who cares about density and more housing in Menlo Park and making sure we can attempt to tackle that crisis. And I feel like it's entirely disingenuous that we give a full housing. Sorry, you may please sit down. I don't have a specific question for you. If we do, we can call you back. I don't want to make sure you're standing too much. I, I've mentioned before that I think it's entirely disingenuous that we, as a city, get credit for a full housing unit by adding an ADU. But that is state math, and there is state law, and I'm not one to quibble or argue with that here. I will say, in addition to density, there is an inherent value to square footage, in my mind. I have three kids. I would like to live in a house that's bigger than most of the houses that currently live in Menlo Park. I would love it if there were many more four-bedroom houses in Menlo Park, so I could have bedrooms and an office and be able to have that space without fighting for the other families who also want that for the very, very limited square footage there is in town. And so to say that this house is too big because it's out of character, I said this last time, there was a house that was out of character. Part of the reason why these two-story houses are out of character of any given neighborhood is because we've been very restrictive to date historically on allowing two-story houses to be the character that we see within our various neighborhoods. Given that this project complies with all height requirements of our municipal code, that we have said we allow, basically, at face value, and the only reason it is here before us in the planning commission is because the lot is substandard, I find no reason why we should, I certainly won't, or why anyone should reject this project on the basis of height, given that it does not exceed the allowable height. And it is, what we have already said, we want, or we are comfortable with in Menlo Park, in the zoning district, in these neighborhoods. And so that's all I'll say, and I'm happy to make a motion. Commissioner Sellen.
Thanks. I see your point. I do just want to highlight that we are approving use permits, and there's specific language for use permits, where we have to give due regard, and I have it pulled up because I always refer back to it. So we have to give due regard to the nature and condition of all adjacent uses and structures, and to general and specific plans for the area. And we have to consider whether a project will be detrimental to the, you know, health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing working in the neighborhood. So I guess, long story short, is I think we can quibble about whether something fits the neighborhood or not, but it is something we're supposed to pay attention to. I do agree with you that we have our development standards, and it seems that almost every lot in Menlo Park seems to require a use permit to make changes. So we made these development standards, but then we also require this sort of discretionary review for every home. On top of that, that then sort of allows us to be very subjective, which is strange, and maybe that's something we'll reconsider eventually. But for now, yeah, I think, I just want to acknowledge that, yeah, I do think we're supposed to, as planning commissioners, we should be considering how a home might impact the neighborhood. I just think, and maybe this is what you're also trying to say, is that I don't think adding a two-story home on this street would be sort of, like, detrimental to people on that street or their welfare. I do think that it's, maybe some people wouldn't like it, and that's understandable. And we all have acknowledged that, or many of us here have acknowledged that it's kind of taller than the nearby homes. But as far as detriment, especially when weighed against the other city priorities of, yeah, adding housing, having housing for different types of families, and just generally, I think, wanting the public to feel like if we have development standards and they meet those development standards, their project won't be disapproved for sort of like a nebulous reason. I think it still follows that we should approve this project.
Vice Chair Silverstein. I quickly want to really emphasize what the last thing that Commissioner Sellen said as an excellent point that I hadn't put into words. There is so much work that goes into a project before it comes before the planning commission through the applicant and the architects and the owners and staff. And the certainty and ambiguity around a project, making it through all of those hurdles, and then potentially facing a, either pushback or rejection as a function of, you know, we can say quibbles, we can say very real objections. But either way, that ambiguity is really painful. And to whatever extent possible, I would love to avoid that, to not have people need to start to the beginning because of various discretion that I know we do have. But I personally feel a very strong responsibility to exercise said discretion as a function of what I know it takes to actually get here.
I will second that, and I'll say that I know a family in a neighborhood close to mine that put in a lot of good-faith effort into designing a redevelopment of their home to accommodate their growing family, and they worked carefully with their neighbors. And somewhere in the two years or so that it took them to secure approval from the city, the cost of building the project had become untenable for them. And so they were no longer able to do it, even though it did eventually get approved. And I just, I find that regrettable, especially because the neighbors were actually in the end. end, excited about the project. So I'd like not to contribute to that kind of scenario where people make a really good faith effort to make, to get something done, and then it doesn't happen.
Commissioner Farrak.
Thanks. I don't disagree with that sentiment. I'm finished, well, very slowly, finishing an overpriced project with ridiculousity costs myself. The question then becomes, if it ticks all these boxes, why are we even here? Like, if it's in the table and it works, like, I don't understand why we're here. Why do we have to even talk about it if it's just gonna pass, and then it has to pass? And so...
Can I answer that? Because I've been thinking about this.
I mean, I'm asking it sort of like, you know, generally rhetorically, so sure.
Okay. Commissioner Beruzzi, and then I believe Vice Chair Silverstein wanted to add something.
I don't want to belabor this, but I think at many, I think we've often philosophized that perhaps this is not the best use of staff and commission time, the fact that 70% or so of the lots in our city are considered substandard, and therefore, there's this discretionary review process that would not otherwise exist. And I think that it's incumbent on us to be really careful about any kind of unconscious bias we have when we're called on to review, like, boy, I personally wouldn't want to live in that house, and so maybe, or, you know, I think that's kind of ugly, or the person doesn't seem that nice. You know, there are all kinds of ways in which the discretionary, like, our own personal biases can cause us to be unfair. And I would love to remove a little bit of that if possible. But I do think that the purpose of the planning commissioner largely is beyond this, right? It's also looking at the big city plans, and looking at the things like Parkline, which we spent a lot of time on a couple of months ago. And I hope that, you know, we can get past spending so much time on these little discretionary review projects and get back to those bigger picture planning items.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
Ditto.
Commissioner Farrak.
I don't disagree with that general sentiment either, but the point is that we are asked, right now, our job is to have discretionary review over these, and we are, as Commissioner Sillin pointed out, have to look at the context, have to look at your, you know, so it's not a, that is our job here. If you don't like the job here, then don't be here to do it. You know, that's what the role is. Until the city council changes our remit, that is what we're required to do.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yeah. I think I want to say that I agree with both sides, which is, I do wish that we could streamline some of this. I do think that in the meantime, it isn't, you know, we have these hearings for a reason. I think for the spirit, if I could sort of, I know we've asked staff in the past how this came about, of like, substandard lots, and why there's so many. I'm guessing the spirit was for smaller lots, there tends to be more tighter fits. And so, perhaps the idea was, if we have this sort of public meeting, then people could be more thoughtful about it, maybe even just because such a meeting is going to happen. You know, the neighbors will talk to each other beforehand versus, oh, if there's no meeting, I'll just do whatever I want. So I see the value, I think, just what I'm hearing, and where maybe I'm at as well, is like, as a commission, we just find that, yes, that's valuable, but weighed against other priorities, perhaps not as much as previously, and perhaps when this law was, when these zoning codes were changed to be this way, there were a lot less such projects coming before the commission. I don't know. But anyway, I don't think that, for example, Commissioner Farrak's concerns about height or diagonal lines or whatever, like, are to be dismissed, or a neighbor concerned about privacy, I don't think we're saying that. And then we're just going to rubber stamp everything? I think we're saying that, given what we've heard, or at least given what I've heard, I'm still comfortable approving this project, but it doesn't mean that every single project that meets our development standards, I would be comfortable approving. There have been other projects where we've added conditions for privacy and things like that. So, yeah, I think we should continue to make sure we're finding the use permit findings each time for each project until otherwise guided by council.
We currently don't have a motion. We don't have to make one, but if someone wants to...
Yes, Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Chair. I think, as always, the planning commission or members here have made some eloquent and thoughtful points about the role of zoning and the planning commission, and the role that each of us individually play. I hope staff takes these into consideration for future agenda items. Out of respect for the applicant, I would like to proceed with the sort of specific project question, and I would like to make a motion to grant the use permit as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm seeing no other comments, so I'm going to call the vote on that motion for item F3. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
No.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is six votes in favor, one against, item F3 passes. Which brings us to item F4. F4 is regarding a use permit revision and architectural control revision at 2400 through 2450 Sand Hill Road. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit revision and architectural control revision for modifications to two existing office buildings located within the C1C, or Administrative Professional and Research District, Restrictive Zoning District. The modifications include a second-story bridge between the 2400 and 2450 buildings, which would result in an increase in gross floor area, new security turnstiles, new fencing, and various landscape and courtyard feature changes. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guideline Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Pruder, I believe you are the staff lead for this project, and we also have applicant team members here in person with us. Mr. Pruder, are there any updates to the staff report?
Yes, hello again, and thank you, Chair Eric. Matt Pruder again, associate planner. We do have a couple of updates I'd like to quickly go over for this project. We also received one public comment, which was emailed to the commission and is available at the back counter. And this is from SFPUC, and it was basically an informational comment that pointed out an 80-foot-wide easement. To clarify and hopefully simplify the discussion on that matter, that is referring to an easement for SFPUC, that is 80 feet wide, that runs along Sharon Park Drive. And if needed, we can talk more about it. But basically, it is primarily located along the entirety of the road width of Sharon Park Drive. There is a small portion, however, that does technically, I'm not exactly sure, by a few feet perhaps, intersect and intrude into the, what would be the Sharon Park-facing property line of the subject property. But again, that is quite distant from the proposed work, and it's not something that the applicant intends to have any construction or other activities in. The comment did refer to if any activities would occur in and around the vicinity of that 80-foot-wide easement, that, you know, that wouldn't be something that SFPUC would, you know, be accepting of. So it's been made clear the applicant is aware of it, and they have also affirmed with me that they would not be completing any work in the vicinity of that area. I'm happy to answer any questions. In following that, we have our applicant team here, as mentioned before, and they'll be led by Harlan Pataho, who will have some brief opening remarks, but no visual presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. As Matthew said, my name is Harlan Pataho. I work with Revel Architecture, we're the AOR, on the 2400-2450 Sand Hill Road project. Our client is relocating, basically down the road from their existing location in Sand Hill Road, to a property that's owned and run by Divco West, the Quadress Hill Campus at 2400 and 2450. They've been in Menlo Park since 2009, and they're committed to a long-term lease to stay for the long term in the future. And we've actually also selected a local GC, Novo Construction, so we're using a local builder to execute this project. All of our information's on the packet online. If you have any questions, we're here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pataho. Before we move to public comment, do any commissioners have clarifying questions on this item for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. I have a minor clarifying question for the applicant. I am curious about why the bridge between the two buildings was demolished back in 2020?
From my understanding, they had different tenants in each of the buildings, so they removed it at that point. Now that our tenants coming in and occupying space in both buildings, they want to replace the bridge back there, in its current, in the existing location.
Okay. So it was functional, not structural in any way?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. Question for staff. Could you please clarify what a landscape reserve parking spot is? It mentions that the applicant is adding a parking spot, and it's a landscape reserve parking spot.
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Sillin. Yes, as a quick overview, the landscape reserve parking requirement is generally something you'll find in a few of the Sand Hill Road properties that have these C1-type designations, in this case, C1C. And this is to satisfy the overall parking requirement. This goes back to, I think, a longer legacy of the Quadress site, which is the entirety of the 2400, to, I believe, 2494 property. It's comprising nine, arguably 10 buildings, with the two buildings we're looking at today that are becoming one. As a result, there were studies done, I believe, a few decades back, that determined an acceptable amount of parking, but still requiring the same rate. As a result of that, additional parking was needed, but was acceptable in a landscape reserve format wherein the areas were designated, and if future parking needed to be constructed based on different trends, even though the rate required a certain amount, not all parking spaces had to be built out. And so, I believe the requirement is 893 spaces, and considerably less are on site because the reality is not exactly requiring as much, based on earlier studies, again, a few decades ago, that allowed for this to remain. With the work at hand, any new gross floor area that was increased would require additional parking, and has thus triggered an additional space to be added, as well as EV and ADA parking upgrades, which, you know, basically go hand-in-hand with any parking changes on the site. And that's why you're seeing three different changes with parking, sorry, four different changes with parking. The ADA parking change, where a few ADA spaces are being relocated, and a few EV charger spaces are being added. Two new non-ADA, non-EV standard spaces are being positioned on the site. And in addition, one landscape reserve is required to continue that kind of equilibrium, if you will, for the site at large. And this is, again, site-wide. I believe there might be a larger area-wide drawing that shows most of the landscape parking spaces, but I don't believe the assessment required them to show all of them on the drawing. And we didn't require that of the applicant, given the focused nature of the project. But it is something that is endemic to the entire site.
Thank you. So is a landscape reserve parking spot, like, you said they're adding one, so does that mean they're taking? Well, first of all, if I'm reading between the lines, my understanding is that these are parking spots that are not actual parking spots, but there's landscaping there that could be removed if it needed to be turned into parking spots? And so, when you say they're adding one, does that mean they're adding, like, they're adding more landscaping, or are they converting one of these reserved spots into a real spot?
They are adding one standard parking space, and they are relocating a landscape reserve space because of some of the overall parking space reconfiguration. With some of the EV charger spaces and ADA spaces, the sizing, mainly the width, has resulted in a loss of a space, in addition to the fact that one space is needed because of the additional GFA, gross floor area. So technically, two spaces had to be relocated somewhere. One of those two spaces is occupying an existing landscape reserve space. That's kind of to the west of the property, or the subject building. And one additional relocation had to occur because the landscape reserve space in question was converted, is being converted. And so, we have to find that additional space. And so, they've relocated one landscape reserve space. They're not adding another landscape reserve space. I mean to clarify, it's the same number of landscape reserve, it's just kind of a relocation of one of them, and again, next to existing, like, four or five that are next to that.
Okay. Thank you. I guess you mentioned that there was history of having, like, a certain number of required spots, and then additional landscape reserves parking spots? Could you just clarify what that means again?
Basically, when the Quadress site was developed and these buildings came about, I believe initially in the late 60s into the 70s, not as many buildings were constructed, but over time, a few have been added. There have been studies done that have determined acceptable parking levels relative to the requirement. And I believe conditions of approval were applied to earlier approvals for the initial construction of these buildings, that allowed for fewer spaces than required to be actually built and accessible, but still required them to guarantee that the land would become, if needed, future parking. So kind of creating a sort of dedication, if you will, to ensure that if ever needed, all those spaces could be built out.
Okay. Thank you. That's very clear. Appreciate it. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, see more, sorry. Seeing no more clarifying questions, I'm going to ask Ms. Roy if you could please provide instructions for public comment, and open the comment period for this item F4.
Thank you, Chair Eric. Once again, we are opening public comment period for item F4. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you'd like to speak, please fill out a comment card and hand it over to me. If you are attending virtually via Zoom, please click on the raised hand button, and if you are calling by phone, please press star 9 on your keypad, and you will be able to speak. At this moment, I don't have any comment cards or any hand raised, but if you like, we can wait for some more moments.
I think folks have had enough time. I'm comfortable closing the comment period for item F4, and moving us back to commission discussion, and ultimately, a motion regarding the use permit and architectural control revision. Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. I guess, through the chair, just a follow-up question for staff. Could you clarify specifically what requires a use permit out of what's being proposed here? I guess, maybe I'll just be more specific. If the applicant, if there wasn't this requirement that if the square footage is being added, then all this parking conversion has to happen, would we still be here in this project? Or is it only here because of this whole parking situation?
Thank you for the question. It's a little nuanced. In terms of response, the use permit revision I'll cover first, that is due to the increase in gross floor area. The office use is a conditional use, and so every time we have an increase in office square footage for this zoning, we need to have a use permit or a use permit revision. And so, in this case, this was a similar circumstance a few years ago in 2021. There was a small increase in GFA then, so they had a use permit requirement for that project, which is the current building that we're reviewing that's being revised. And that's the case now. That's for the use permit requirement. For the architectural control requirement, the extent of the physical changes, which, again, are summarized a little bit, but it's a variety of changes. It's not just the facade, it's the nature of the bridge being added. That's also GFA being increased, but it's also a physical change that's rather substantial. We have a lot of courtyard and other landscaping changes. So collectively, that requires the architectural control revision for the existing architectural control approval. And so, those are the reasons for the two sets of requirements here, the entitlements.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, I guess, I'm feeling feisty today. To me, it feels kind of crazy that the applicant has to do so many things just to add a small bridge connecting two buildings. I'm not, I'm assuming that this bridge will not be office space, so having to add additional parking because of a bridge between two buildings seems kind of burdensome, in addition to having to convert all these spaces, et cetera. I guess I will caveat what I'm saying with, you know, there was a bridge, then it got removed, then a bridge is being added back. It seems like the applicant is making other changes while they're at it, so it doesn't seem, perhaps it's not so burdensome, or it's just being tucked in with other things. But, yeah, that, to me, seems kind of unnecessary, specifically the parking part of it. But other than that, I don't... But other than that, I don't see any issue with, I would be happy to support the project. This is more a comment on our city policies.
I'll just take a moment to put, again, on the list of things that we ask of staff just to take a look at whether or not it makes sense to have office spaces a conditional use. Sand Hill Road is literally world famous for the offices that are there, and so it seems fairly silly that that is the case. So I would ask staff to potentially look at that when they look at potential modifications to the zoning code in the future. That being said, I am comfortable supporting this project.
Commissioner Farrick.
Thank you. Over the years, I've seen many applications by Quadras at these locations, and they're always thoughtful in quality, so definitely supportive. If you're all ready, I'll be happy to make a motion. I'd like to approve the use permit and architectural control for 2400 to 2450 Sand Hill Road per the staff report.
Vice Chair Silverstein. Before we vote on a motion, I just have a clarifying question for staff. Well, no one seconded it.
I'll second it.
Until there's a motion to end debate, I have a quick clarifying question to staff, which is, would, I'm not necessarily proposing this, but would we on the commission have the right or ability to allow the additional square footage of the bridge without requiring any of these parking changes? Or do those come part and parcel, no matter what?
They do come with the, I guess, territory of the request, because it basically is required due to a variety of factors. One, we have one parking space initially that's required when you add gross floor area. I don't believe there's a path to making that landscape reserve, but the other issue is the fact that the extent of TI, sorry, tenant improvement work, which is not really reflected in the staff report, because that's more of a building permit and non-discretionary action, is exceeding 10,000 square feet as a whole, which requires EV chargers to be built and other EV requirements to be met. And that is kind of a domino effect on the allocation of standard parking spaces. In addition to that, there are accessibility requirements for ADA parking, given the extent of interior modifications and the square footage of that change. And so all of that collectively requires a shuffling of the parking, which, if it were only an interior tenant improvement, it's possible that this would not be something that the Planning Commission reviews, but the extent of exterior modifications and the increase in the gross floor area are the reasons for this.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion in a second.
We do, and I'm seeing no further comments from commissioners, so I will call the vote on that motion. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that item, or rather, motion passes with seven votes for and zero against. That concludes the public hearing items for tonight. Ms. Sandmeyer, would anyone from staff, sorry, we're going to move on to informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer, would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming Planning Commission meetings or agendas?
Yes, thank you. So the last meeting of the year will be December 15th, and we have a study session on updates to the ADU ordinance on that meeting. And then the first meeting of the year will be January 12th, and we haven't confirmed the agenda for that one yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Do commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Farrick.
Yes, Ms. Sandmeyer, when is the new, the 2026 revised calendar or final calendar going to be republished? We saw a draft several weeks ago, had a few comments, and so we're waiting to hear back.
Yeah, great question. I don't, I don't think I was at that meeting, but we can certainly add that to the website. I think that'll be helpful. Or were there questions that required follow-up?
Sorry. Usually, the calendar, isn't it provided to us? Like you'd provided the draft, and there was just like a date or two that some people had some conflicts with, so I think we were all anticipating, thank you, applicants, yeah. I think we're all anticipating, you know, the outcome of the decision of when those would occur. And so I thought that we typically would get the revised, here's when we're going to be scheduling the meeting, so that we can all go mark our calendars.
Yeah, specifically, the date in April was, overlaps with both primary school districts. Spring breaks was under consideration to be revised. But I certainly haven't put any of the dates in my calendar pending getting a final version.
All right, thank you for the background. So Mr. Perata was liaison that evening, so I'll check in with him on the final calendar, and we'll get that sent out to commissioners.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. I have a conflict December 15th, so unfortunately, we'll not be able to make that meeting. Thank you.
Vice Chair Silverstein. Yeah, I just have a question out of curiosity from staff. Tonight and in other Planning Commission meetings, we've used this ambiguous statement of maybe staff could write down a note on revisiting some part of our variances. You know, I asked the question about looking into the 20-foot R3 district requirements and asking for variances. Without any specifics, is there a cadence upon which that gets written down and then evaluated? Is there a meeting that would come up? Or when we ask that potential question of staff to look into it, what happens from that point on?
Yeah, so certainly we're taking notes, but for us to work on something like that, it does need to come from city council and through the city manager, who directs our work.
So is there a list somewhere that gets, I mean, I'm happy to kind of take notes myself, but can just generally assume when someone asks, like, hey, staff, could you write that down as another note? Is that, is there a table somewhere of all the municipal code items that planning commissioners have asked? I mean, maybe that's reflected in various minutes that someone could look back into, but I'm just wondering, does that, when we ask the question, could staff write a note of that? Does that sit somewhere that exists as a file or a table, a database, that then someone could look into when the time comes, if city council asks the question of, hey, what were all the various things that came up in the last year of Planning Commission agenda items that might be interested in reviewing? Is that documented in some format?
Yeah, I think it would be in minutes. We don't have a comprehensive list, since the direction, yeah, would come from city council.
Thank you.
Okay, I have an informational item. As Ms. Sandmeyer mentioned, the next Planning Commission meeting is a study session on modifications to the city's ADU ordinances. I would like to give information to the public and the commission. I had correspondence with staff, I'm reading from an email dated July 10th of this year. On this email was copied, planning staff, the director of the planning, the head of the planning department, Kyle Perata, the community development director, Deanna Chow, as well as the city manager. And staff said that they plan to bring modifications to the zoning code regarding substandard, single-family dwelling lots, along with modifications to the city's ADU and SB9 ordinances. That email was from July. Given that our next meeting is about the city's ADU ordinances, I followed up with staff to confirm whether or not modifications to substandard, our substandard, single-family dwelling lot ordinances would be on the agenda for the next meeting. Staff clarified that they would not be because it makes more sense to consider them alongside modifications to SB9 ordinances, and that a study session regarding SB9 is planned for the first quarter of 2026, and that we shouldn't expect substandard lots to be a part of that discussion. With that, I will adjourn this meeting at exactly 9:00 PM. Thank you, everyone.